This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Present.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for an opportunity to come out and serve in the capacities that you have bestowed upon us to see to the needs of the common man in this place that we call the city of Gadsden. We ask that your hand be involved with all leadership decisions at the local, state, and federal level. We ask that you continue to bless those and be a source of comfort to those who are going without need at this hour. We ask that your hand continue to be over our troops as they continue their efforts to fight for freedom and peace, not just for this land that we call the United States, but for all peace-loving nations. We ask these things and we will be ever grateful and thankful to give you the praise and the glory. In your son Christ's name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on May the 8th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of May the 4th through the 10th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, is mayor?
Right there.
Yes. The Gadsden Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is holding its Jabberwalk.
Jabberwalk.
Jabberwalk. It's a big word like mayonnaise. Pageant on Friday, May 18th, 2012. Jabberwalk is one of the many impressive activities sponsored by Gadsden Alumni Chapter in implementing programs centered around its five-point thrust. This triennial affair is one of the city's mechanisms for recognizing outstanding young people in the community. These young women have been recognized as Gadsden finest and are encouraged to continue on the path of improvement and achievement. This tribute is given on this occasion to the Gadsden Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for its commitment to our city. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 18th, 2012, as the day of the Gadsden Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated presents diamonds and pearls in Gadsden and by doing so, I extend best wishes for successful and enjoyable evening to the sorority's participants, honorees, and assembled guests.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Anita Simmons. I am the chairperson of our first annual Jabberwalk. We are from Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, founded in 1913. We are over 280,000 strong, United States and abroad. Our Jabberwalk is a pageant that allows young women to develop friendships, showcase their talents, raise money, support charities in this community. We are involved everywhere you see us. You might see the red and white. We have been doing activities with these ladies since September of 2011 and we were called on to culminate this Friday at our Jabberwalk. Jabberwalk is an evening of elegance and entertainment and it showcases our young ladies' gifts and talents. We have 15 young ladies that we are presenting from 4th grade to the 9th grade and if you are not busy, please come out and support us at 7:00 PM at Gadsden Convention Hall. Thank you and we thank you for the proclamation.
My granddaughter's participating, so please come out and see her. I mean, other young ladies.
We have none today. Number nine is a nuisance on property located at 709 Tarrant Court has been abated by the owner. There's no action necessary by the council. Ten, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 109 South 20th St., 3rd Street, and District 6. Hermania M. Alvarez and Jim Peppers being the licensed owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in July of 2010. There've been no improvements to this. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Brian, we're still looking at rehabs and stuff like that. Okay.
Any other?
I don't think this would qualify for rehab, Doug.
Oh, I didn't ask. I mean, I wasn't saying it. I'm just saying, we're still looking at it.
You've been in it. I've been around it.
I mean, as long as we still check it, I don't have an opinion on it one way or the other. I just...
And we can get Brian's opinion. What do you think, Brian? You think it would qualify for rehab, that house?
Well, from what we've seen of the inside, it may be a stretch. We'll crunch the numbers. We usually do after a resolution before we send a notice to proceed. We could possibly rehab.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 207 Ann Street, District 7. Johnny M. Balcom and the estate of Martha Hay Balcom, Rebecca Ann Balcom and Martha Elizabeth Balcom Kemper. An American general finance with a licensed owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started our case in August of last year. There've been no improvements to this property. There are no permits to improve and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else wish to speak in favor of it? Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve, our final public hearing is a resolution granting a known of a street right-of-way. First United Methodist Church has requested a known of this alley. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thirteen is a resolution accepting easement from the First United Methodist Church of Gadsden. This is an easement to the city to replace access to that unknown in the previous resolution. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Fourteen is a resolution rejecting all bids for bid number 3204 for plastic roadway pipe. Due to the price fluctuation of plastic, no bids were received. Apartments using plastic pipe should obtain three quotes for any purchase and the total purchases by the city should remain under $15,000. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Last year, we didn't use nowhere near $15,000 worth of pipe. I think we used about $6,500 and like you said, the price of it just keeps going up and up and up, so we're just, they just rejected the bid we had because we really didn't use that much last year.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Fifteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Fishers of Men Tournament. This is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament October the 2nd through the 6th. The amount is $10,000. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Sixteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Good Sam RV Travel Guide and Camp Grand Directory. This is for the advertisement of Nakalula Falls Park and Camp Grand. The amount is $15,498.45. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Seventeen is a resolution authorizing satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien. Nakalula Church of God has offered to pay $500 to satisfy the liens on property located at 107 East Kyle Place. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
First reading ordinance amending schedule of fines and costs for park trash pass violations. This increases the fine for the first violation from $25 to $100, the second violation from 50 to 150, the third violation from 100 to 200. This ordinance is presented today for the first reading. The council will vote on it next week. New business? Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have two. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider. The first one is 203 is a resolution authorizing application for the 2012 ADECA Underage Drinking Funding Program grant in the amount of $24,436. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And I have one more. Number 201 is a resolution authorizing agreements with AT&amp;T Advertising Solutions. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is authorizing or getting us around to all contracts should be approved by the council for the mayor's signature. All contracts. Bringing it back to light.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Not all. Okay. Not all contracts.
Well, you're talking about the settlement of under $10,000 of a lawsuit.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure we didn't say all contracts.
We do that.
Yeah. Well, we eventually do. Whatever turns y'all on, I move to adopt.
I second that motion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Now, I ask you if it was any discussion?
And I think I did discuss it. I'm ready to vote.
And we had some comments on the other end there.
Call for the question, I understand.
I did call for a question. I'd love to hear the vote.
I mean, I thought we were doing that anyway. I mean, it's fine. They all have a problem.
Yeah. We discussed, I don't think you were upstairs when we discussed that and I agree, we had that full discussion. That's right.
I'd rather y'all vote on it anyway. I don't give a vote.
The discussion didn't help anything, but we had it.
It's a matter of if we trust any future mayors to spend $1,000 on the contract. Now, we want the council to approve all contracts.
Almost.
Almost. Call for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have two items I would like to ask unanimous consent to consider today. Number one is a resolution number 202 authorizing license agreement with extreme events for the Barbarian Challenge.
Have a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is for the Barbarian Challenge event that will be held on Saturday, June the 23rd, 2012. And, you know, if you go to that event, you know, you truly have to be almost barbaric to participate in the event.
I understand that all the councilmen are required to participate this year, so y'all be there.
All who have been in office for more than one term.
I have no problems. I'm gonna be with the starter whistle and I'll be blowing it.
I understand they had about 700 people participate last year. They do it at the fall. It's quite an event.
Yeah.
They're thinking double that this year.
Like I say, I'll blow the whistle.
We couldn't even get up a tag team.
No.
I could probably be in it, but I'd come in last place.
Well, I might accept our challenge.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Please.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The other item is a resolution authorizing transfer of outdoor warning sirens to other governments in the county.
Second. You got a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, this resolution transfers all the, to the other jurisdictions around us, the outdoor warning sirens for them, for their maintenance in the future. The city of Gadsden will no longer maintain all the warning devices that are in the whole county. We will only be responsible for those located within the city limits.
Any other new business?
I'm in discussion. Have we heard back from Mike yet?
I haven't seen him.
It was my understanding that he was going to go to the county because there's still some concerns whether or not the county is gonna agree to do theirs.
Yeah, my understanding was that he was, our understanding in the meeting this morning was that he was talking to them and that had changed, that they were going to accept responsibility for the maintenance. However, in the event that they do not accept responsibility for the maintenance of those outdoor sirens, they're theirs whether they want to do it or not.
I just want to say, there's a line here that says, as of this date, that the county commission has not yet notified.
That's true, Billy, and that's, this is part of the weather warning system that we've been over in the Doppler system. So this is just another step to get that out to the jurisdiction.
Yeah, a lot of those were under CSEP money.
Right.
And then I think we were covering the rest that weren't probably, but we had it prorated according to the population and all and divided up and I think all the municipalities had agreed to it already. So I don't know about the county.
We've already made that up.
Yeah. No more CSEP money available. Run out.
So let me understand what's happening here because this resolution, it states the cities who have accepted and it says everyone except the jurisdiction of the county commission. So it's my understanding that we passed this, we, you know, they're on their own. They're out there, whether they accept it or not.
That's right.
Okay. We give them the opportunity, Robert, to accept it and if they don't, then that's their problem, the way I see it. So for the protection of their people, it's in their best interest to go ahead and accept it.
I just want to make sure we understand that we're not responsible for the ones in the county. We're only responsible for the ones in the city based on this resolution.
That's right.
Okay.
The other cities have and there's only one outlier and it's...
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, there's, I have one item. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing agreement between the city of Gadsden and the Nakalua Improvement Association. I'd like to again ask for consideration today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is essentially an agreement that serves to rework and then execute an agreement that was initiated between the city of Gadsden and the Nakalua Improvement Association back in 2007 originally, I believe. And I think at that point, there was some, the agreement called for the erection of a garden and wedding chapel and the maintenance on the part of the city of Gadsden. So this agreement totals $75,000 over the next three years and it speaks to rehabilitation of buildings in the Pioneer Village at Nakalua Falls.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have one resolution authorizing settlement of a lawsuit. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now, I'd ask for passage.
Second. Is there any discussion?
This is a lawsuit authorizing settlement with J.C. Clay on some building materials, something that was supposedly left in a building that we demolished.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committee's boards, Craig.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Craig Scott and I'm the Adult Services Librarian with the Gadsden Public Library. The library's been as busy as ever, but we're gonna get a whole lot busier coming up with summer reading. We'll have lots of events for the kids and teens and in this summer, an adult summer reading program too. The national theme for the adults is called Between the Covers. So we're gonna have a lot of fun with that. But my real reason for coming before you today is to announce that we're one of eight libraries in the country and we are receiving this week a national touring space exhibit coming in from NASA. We'll put it on display next Monday. We'd like to invite all of you and the community as well to our grand opening next week at 10 o'clock on Monday. And the showcase of this, we've arranged with the Johnson Space Center to have some actual lunar samples come in, moon rocks. So Chief, I contacted your office yesterday about that. We can't go to Gadsden Variety to find some of these, so notified the police that we'll have some extra special samples on display. So we're also having a speaker come in from the Marshall Space Flight Center in Huntsville, a Gadsden native, Keith Robinson. Dr. Keith Robinson will be coming in and talking to us next week at our grand opening. So we'll have the exhibit for eight weeks through mid-July, so and lots of activities between next Monday and mid-July. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Is there any other board members? Remarks by the mayor and the council? Billy, you want to start?
Well, yes. Yeah, this is Billy over here. I have the said responsibility to go into a funeral right away, Miss Virginia McCleskey, a dear friend, has passed away lately. So I will not be able to stay and hear all the political remarks coming up. So I'm just busy myself.
You're gonna miss a treat, man.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what they say. Soon as you walk out the door.
Who's going now, Mr. President?
Okay. Thank you, Bill. We are, sorry you have to leave. I do have a funeral to attend today also. Bud Rigby is being funerated today at 1:00 and I will be attending that funeral in West Michigan. And I just, and of course, I have a cousin to pass yesterday morning, Tiny Cole, who passed yesterday morning, who will be funerated in the very near future. We just ask that you keep these families in your prayers because they will need your prayers. And we will not have a District 1 meeting next Monday. Our regular 3rd Monday meeting will be rescheduled for sometime around the 1st of June. We will not have the meeting because we will be in attendance at the Alabama Municipalities League Conference in Birmingham on Monday of next week. So we will not have the meeting, but Chapman, stay tuned. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, had the pleasure of attending the anti-bullying event and teen suicide event on Saturday at the YMCA. Very good turnout. That young lady did a very good job. Ms. Ariel Riley did a very good job organizing that event. Not the easiest thing in the world to organize that, but everybody who won it got hot dogs and t-shirts and got an opportunity to run in the 5K event, so it was very good turnout. They released balloons, which I thought was very creative and unique in and of itself, but they released balloons with the names of young people who had been subjected to and I think had died as it relates to bullying. So again, this young lady not only came up with a great idea, but she's put a lot of thought into carrying out this event. So it was very good turnout and I want to thank those who supported and attended the event. Do want to appeal to the mayor's office relative to the Oakley Estates area and this is, this is not a complaint, it's just an opportunity for us as it relates to, there's a lot of demolition activity in that area and it's due. It's activity that's probably as a result of our last Renewing Our Neighborhoods initiative. So much of the activity that's happening up there in terms of homes being tagged and things of that nature is due, but I think at the same time, part of our Renewing Our Neighborhoods initiative is to make sure we rebuild communities, so want to give us an opportunity to put some thought into how we're gonna. And it's... thought into how we're gonna. And it's, and it's a tough environment because there's really no incentive for developers to come in and develop, in particular in outlying areas like that. So, it's tough. And I'm not, you know, and the mayor doesn't, I don't envy him. He's got a tough job in figuring that one out. But, but again, we, you know, I want, do want to start that whole process of determining how we're gonna do that. And I'm, I'm open to supporting however I can. How, Highway 411 project, I do want to thank the Gadsden Times for running the, the story on Sunday regarding the project. I, I'm gonna speak to some of the things that the story didn't cover. The, I think very, very plainly, what's, what's at risk is a 35, 40 million dollar project. It's a, and, and it's a capacity project, which are, which is one of only a couple, I think, in the state right now. So, we're very fortunate to have that project even listed on the list of projects that are being funded by Alda. And I don't think I have to say that we don't have the capacity to fund 35, 40 million dollar projects. That project's already been started. A lot of money's already been put into the project. And right now, the holdup is a bridge in Turkey Town that, that has very little traffic and will probably cost a few, few thousand dollars to, to, at the very worst case, a million dollars to, to repair. If there was ever an instance of penny wisdom and pound foolishness, I think that, that, that kind of speaks to it. You know, and I, and I think, you know, it should be noted that Alda has been very, very cooperative with the city and, and even the county as it relates to how they've worked with us and, and forewarned us and really kind of guided us through this whole process. They were very clear back in December, January, that, that failing to sign off on those maintenance agreements and municipal agreements could serve to be a deal breaker. They were very clear about that. They weren't heavy-handed, just very clear. Guys, we can't take anything else into our inventory. So, if you want this 35, 40 million, be prepared to take on something. So, the City of Gadsden decided, we understand that. And we very quickly signed our agreements to take on the existing corridor after it had been paid one last time. So, we, we get it. We get it. You know, apparently, the, some other officials in the county didn't really understand that. And, and so, where, where they missed it was that they thought that it was important enough to haggle with the state regarding a big project versus that bridge. Not the wisest thing to do. Because what they have done essentially is put at risk a large project within our city limits. And I can't be any more plainspoken than I'm being right now. They have put at risk that project. And it's important that they understand and know. And I, and it's important that we get the, the citizens of the city to understand and know that we understand all of the accidents and, and the capacity issues that are associated with that. And, and we get it, but I don't think everybody else does. So, please encourage your elected officials, in particular the, the county officials, to go ahead and sign the municipal agreement and stop putting that project at risk. The, you know, and one other point I want to make, and I, and I apologize, Mr. President, for belaboring the point. But, but I, but I think it should be noted that historically, you know, City of Gadsden hasn't really had a whole lot of concerns or issues with other municipalities around us. To be quite honest, you know, we've all worked well in, in terms of collaborating on various projects. There's generally one sticking point. I mean, as you saw with the, the ordinance, the resolution that we passed today relative to the sirens, there's generally one sticking point consistently as it relates to, you know, collaboration. And it's, it's one entity. And that's unfortunate because there are a lot of good people there on the commission. There are a lot of good folks who, who truly reach out and try to work with the city. But, there are some in administrative capacities who generally don't. And, and I think that's where, that's where our problem lies. So, again, as voters, please put the pressure on. Thank you.
Sounds like that was a great speech to concede from the county. But, anyway, my district meeting on, on Thursday of next week won't particularly be my district meeting. The esteem program is gonna be at the Carver Community Center on next Thursday. And I would ask all individuals who will be attending my district meeting to come out and support these young people. The Greater Gadsden Housing Authority puts on a program for their residents, students who have made the A and B honor roll throughout the year. And they award those students and their parents for the good work. And so, I'm asking everyone to come out. You, I mean, it's amazing to see these young people who have worked all year long to maintain A and B honor rolls be recognized. And people say nothing good comes out of public housing, but you'd be surprised at the number of individuals and these young folks who you will see if you come out on next Thursday at the Carver Community Center. And they start at 5:00 too, I think, at 5:00 or at 6:00. Want to be sure. It's 5:00? She's checking. Jenny's checking. I think it's 5:00. I'm gonna say 5:00 anyway unless Jenny finds something different. Okay, she's gonna check. I'll come back if it's a different time. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite everybody to the gazebo the Saturday before Memorial Day, which is the 25th or 26th. We're gonna dedicate the gazebo to Mr. Rip Reiken. He was a longtime band director here in Gadsden. He's, I don't know how many kids he's taught music to, or they've been under his direction. He's, he always was there for the kids. He's always tried to pick the kids up. No matter if you had money or didn't have money, he was always there for you. We're gonna dedicate the gazebo. At 3:00, we're gonna have the parade down Wall Street. At 4:00, we're gonna dedicate the gazebo. At 5:30, we'll have three groups playing on Sansom Avenue, which will be smoking. And my neighbors started smoking back in the 70s. I don't know if he'll play with them this time or not, but that was from back in the 70s. Then we'll have trucking. They'll be playing after the smoking plays and Beale Ashton will play after that. So, it's probably been all day thing from 3:00 to about 10:30 that night. Hope everybody can come out and be with us.
I didn't have anything, but all of a sudden, I got the golf course. I want to bring a few things to light. I do want to thank the mayor's office. I want to thank Frankie Davis for the foresight and the work that they've done, Public Works. Frankie, that golf course looks really good out there. The greens are exceptional. The fairways are good. All the places where we skinned and played around are starting to grow back and it looks exceptionally well. David Bright and his staff have done a beautiful job, I think. So, other than saying this, please come out and play. We have different pay plans. We've all seen it. The, the green fees are acceptable anywhere. So, I'm just really up on the golf course right now. It looks good. We turned a little profit last month. Maybe we're on a road downhill. Lots of things. So, promote it, promote it, promote it. It's a good thing. That's all I have.
Mayor?
For the mayor, it's 5:30 and it's this Thursday. I was thinking the third Thursday is this Thursday instead of next Thursday. I know the third Monday is next Thursday. But, it's this Thursday at 5:30 at the Carver Community Center. This Thursday. Please, ma'am and please sir, come out.
Okay.
I'm glad you explained that. Now, I understand. I want to cite a little bit about what Derek said. You know, that's the second time we've had an issue. Sutton Bridge Road, when we were trying to do Black Creek Parkway, had a bridge that needed to be replaced for about $700,000. In Rainbow City, they needed some help on their money to do Black Creek Parkway, which is one of the best things that's happened around here transportation-wise in a long time. And they could not get, and it's not in the city of Gadsden, but I see where it helps everyone. So, anyway, they had DNX 45 acres for us when we got Keystone Food and that we owned, but it was in Rainbow City. Didn't charge us anything. So, we stepped up and gave about $200,000. The county finally put in $15,000. They would have had to pay $700 if we didn't do Black Creek because the bridge was already pretty much on with red flags. Just like the communications thing, we didn't even ask anybody. We stepped up and they're spending $600,000 a year for five years, a $3 million communication tower. All the officers now in different departments in, in different cities, in the first responders, they can talk to each other by just flipping to a channel where previously they had to go back to dispatch and go back to their dispatch. It makes it safer for everybody. It's encrypted. Nobody can listen in on the little scanners when they're about to get hit with a drug raid. They don't know it. So, you know, there's just a lot of things. The DHR building, that's normally most places, that's a county deal. We stepped in and did that. Community services, we bought them a building on Broad Street. The EMA thing, we pay a large percentage of that. And then now we got the sirens in the county. And, you know, the maintenance on them, we have to keep the maintenance on them. And we got a pretty good bid, I think, on it. So, you know, they need to step up and do some things when they need to do it and quit trying to play hardball. Maybe they're spending too much money in some other places, like out at that bingo site. That's my vision on it. Thank you.
There'll be no councilman meeting next week due to the Alabama League Conference in Birmingham.
Amen.
If there's not anything further, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So.